Work session for Tuesday, June 20th. Please stand as Commissioner Doria will lead us in our pledge, excuse me, invocation and ask the Shoemaker, Commissioner Shoemaker will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, we are thankful that we can come together tonight. Thank you for all your blessings. We thank you for this needed rain, Lord, for also the dry land. We thank you for everything that you give us, ask us, ask you to be with us tonight, guide us and direct us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. I get commissioners. That brings us to establish a quorum. We have six, one, two, three, six, seven of eight, excuse me, seven of eight, so we have a quorum. Nikki, is there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Saying done, do I have a motion to approve the agenda? So move.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, agenda is accepted. That brings us to our discussion topic, Nikki, metallic mining.
Yes, sir. In an ongoing effort for the planning commission to shoulder the task asked by the Board of Supervisors to study and review the comments and presentations by those very close to the mining industry. You've, I believe, had three work sessions, listening to experts and, as I mentioned, those in the industry. So this evening, the discussion will be led by each of you to determine next steps and a path forward regarding the metallic mining.
Okay. Thank you. In saying that, I'll open it up to the commission. Mr. Wright is here for any questions you may have regards to his presentation on the various avenues that we had and what he said about those. Basically, just summarize real quickly, pretty much he felt like the all options other than the special use permit put the county in more legal jeopardy. But that was his opinion and so we're, have been charged from the Board of Supervisors to write an ordinance, basically a ban. But I don't feel like after, especially after hearing from all the experts and as well as Mr. Wright, that we have the ability to do that without putting the county in exposure to legal jeopardy. So I'm opening up to the commissioners. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, you know, this thing's been going on a lot longer than three sessions. I think I've been listening to gold mining issues for as long as I've been on this commission. It's been over a year or so. I've heard from experts, I've read, we've had an opportunity to listen to the industry people. I would very much like to make some recommendations to the commission that I wish they would take into consideration. Would you allow me to do that, sir?
Yes.
All right. Let me pass these down. First of all, let me start off by saying that mining alone in A1 and M1 are done on a, on a special use basis, on a conditional basis. In M2, it's completely different. I suggest and would recommend to the commission that we leave what goes on in A1 and M1 the way it is. It gives us an opportunity to review the application, bring in the experts where they're required, talk to the industry as well as bringing in the public to hear their concerns. In M2, however, all mining is allowed on a buy right basis. I would recommend and ask that the commission consider taking metal mineral mining out of the buy right area in M2 and putting it into a special use, a conditional use, which would allow us to take a look at the applications that would come here for metalliferous mineral mining and look at those applications, bring in our experts where they might be needed that could also make recommendations and also talk to the industry experts as well as the public. The second recommendation that I'm asking us to consider is to prohibit the use of heavy metals and toxins that accumulate in the soil or under the water in the processing of ore other than materials from mining operations unless in a fully enclosed system. That would include but not be limited to things like cadmium and arsenic and mercury. As far as cyanide is concerned, it's also a heavy toxin. My objection to any of these things is that they could lie in the soil or underwater and accumulate. My suggestion to the, to the commission is that we prohibit any of the use of those things in the processing of metal ores unless it's in a fully enclosed system. As it relates to acid seepage from mines, as you know, when we open up a mine, the minerals inside that mine do oxidize, you introduce water and you end up with acid seepage. The recommendation I'm trying to make here that I'd like the commission to consider in an ordinance or a separate ordinance is that those seepages are monitored by the owner and/or operators or their successors until they're fully neutralized. And certainly, they'd have to be neutralized before they, they're entered back into the environment, before they're released into the environment. That particular seepage could last much longer than maybe the tenure of the owner or the operator. I don't know what our purview is here, but it might be that the board would want to recommend a bonding issue that would go along with that because in any event, if the company no longer existed or the operator no longer existed, I mean, the county would end up having to clean up the environment to take care of the acid seepage. So that would be the third recommendation. The fourth recommendation is really related to water usage and it'd be a recommendation for us to consider having attached to the application for any mining, the usage, a hydrologist, an independent hydrologist's estimate of the usage of water in that mining operation and the effects of that usage on the neighboring property owners who use wells for their homes, for their farms or for their businesses. Last, I would suggest that, and I don't know, but I don't think there's anybody in the county that are mining experts that are qualified to police an ordinance if it were made with these particular conditions. It seems to me we've just had a budget increase, taxpayers are paying a little more money this year, some money should be set aside to put into place a part-time or full-time ordinance inspector who understands mining, who can go out and look at these applications and, and the mining operations to determine whether or not these ordinances are being kept. Mr. Chairman, I'm willing to discuss any of these with you.
Okay. Probably will need to get the legal opinion from Mr. Wright on some of these. I think leaving, the first one I probably can speak to because I've talked to Mr. Wright in several instances, conversations since we had our last work session and the problem you run into with trying to separate your metals and mining is that you butt up against state law. State law does not make any differentiation in the mining. So therefore, if we were to try to do it ourselves, we're exceeding the law that's been provided to us or by the state. So I think that would be the answer. He's got for that, but I don't want to speak to him. I'm gonna let Mr. Wright answer that, but I think that's what you're gonna run. That's been the problem all along that I see is we, we are, we're a little bit handcuffed because of the state authority and them not making any specific differentiation or, in the types of mining and what is mined and all. But I'm, do you want now to hear from Mr. Wright, Pete, on that? Just to make sure that I understood him correctly?
Yeah.
Because I've asked him this question myself.
Yeah, I'd be willing to listen to him, but here, here again, I think under state code, we're not, the reason I suggested what I did is because none of this prohibits mining in any, anywhere in Buckingham. So we're not bumping into the U.S. Constitution and Virginia code's not being violated. What we're doing, and it's within Virginia code, to allow us to ensure the safety and welfare of the residents in the county, what we're looking to do is separate the two kinds of mining because one already exists, we know it's safe, the other one does not exist yet, and I think it's up to us to question the process to ensure the safety and welfare. And I don't think there's anything in Virginia code that does not, that prohibits us from asking those applicants the process they intend and putting conditions on those, on those applications that would ensure the safety and welfare of the surrounding community. So I, I'm happy to hear what Mr. Wright has to say.
He's right behind you, look.
You all can do whatever discussion.
It might be better to save time if, Mr. Wright, you would address each one of them with your legal opinion.
If I understood the, um... Separate metal mining out and not allow it, is that what you're saying?
No, separate it and just, just use it as an SUP. Otherwise, it'd be conditional use.
The difficulty that we talked about before was that in particular districts, the operations need to be uniform. In other words, you can't say houses with red roofs are allowed and houses with yellow roofs are not allowed because that would not be uniform. The state classifies mining as mining without making differentiation. So the problem you get into, if you start treating one type of mining differently from the other type of mining, you're subject to attack on the sense that you're not being uniform within the district that you created for mining. And that would be the legal difficulty with it. It, and in terms of the definitions, it might be hard to really define it, that might be possible, but to distinguish because in some other forms of mining, there are going to be some things coming out of the ground that might be tangential to what their original mining was. So that adds a second difficulty. The other part is zoning is really intended to say these are the areas of the county in which certain types of operation are, can or should be conducted. And then if you go to a special use permit, it says, are there a set of conditions that we can apply to those operations that are allowed by special use permit that would allow it to blend into the area in which it's being located? So if you're saying on one hand that this area of the county, the M2 area, is sufficient to allow mining, but saying mining of another type, what can we do to make it fit into an M2 zone is a little incongruous in my mind. I haven't really thought about that part of it, but the first difficulty would be, would be the, is it uniform within the district in which you want it to happen? And by separating them out, that would be an area that could be, potentially would be subject to legal liability. The second is, would be that issue for a special use permit of a mine of one type when you're already saying this area is a area in the county in which we want to allow mining. So that would be my response to that, Mr. Chairman.
Would you go ahead and, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Wright, while you're there, address all the other three points?
I'm not sure that issue two is really a zoning issue and the state has reserved itself the right to control the water processes in the state of Virginia. I think you would have, you would be subject to attack. Now, understand with anything, until you, until you, somebody says it's wrong and challenges it on it, you can do about anything you want to. It's just like dealing with your parents when you grew up. You know, until they called you down, you got by with it. But, so these are talking hypothetical in terms of the sense that somebody might challenge you on them. I, I think two would be subject to somewhat, if particularly to try to put it in a zoning, I think that's, two is really gonna be a state regulated issue. And again, if you were subject to call on it, you probably would run into some legal difficulties. As to three, it's a regulation, it's not much different from two. Zoning is not designed to deal with methods, it's designed to deal with geography. And two and three really get into methods. Four, you possibly, I don't know whether it could be a controlling factor or not, but I think four, you probably could ask the hydrologist to, I mean, you're really considering the whole area and effect on it has on the district. Four, you probably could work in, probably wouldn't work it, I would probably work it in as a policy and not as a particular restriction. And water has become the, again, that's, you run into who's, who's, who's supposed to be regulating that and the state claims the right to do that. But when in neighboring properties who depend on groundwater for homes, farms and businesses, I mean, again, you're talking about an M2 and you've already said in this area, certain things are designed to happen in M2. I think of the four, could feel more comfortable working in the fourth one into some type of, to deal with a legal challenge depending on how far you want to go with it. Those would be my comments, Mr. Chairman. Happy to answer any questions.
Yes, sir. I went back and just to bring people up to speed, commissioners, I went back and got the maps that Nikki gave to us, I guess, three of our work sessions ago, and areas that we have in M2 or where the existing mines are now. You've got Danamire in Ovonia, of course, you've got the slate quarries down there. That total acreage is twenty, 2,250. No, I'm telling you wrong, I got that, reading the wrong map, apologize. That is basically 2,500 acres. The other area of M2 in the county that's already M2 is the kynite and that's 20, 2,250 acres. So you've got about 4,700 acres in the county that's now designated for M2. Now of that, probably I'd say half or less is already M2. Most of it is still not being switched over by special use permit to M2. It's still A1. So we're talking about a small area here that we've set up for M2. I guess my thinking is, do we, do we want to try, it's obvious from talking to Mr. Wright and other conversations, is you can tweak this, we're in the middle of the comprehensive plan, we can tweak this if you choose to, but we're really sort of hand-strung on doing it at the size of it. As far as conditions and all, apparently it looks like because we've buttoned up against state law, we're sort of limited. So I guess my thought is, do, twofold, do you want to, let's read back up and say, all right, do we want to have all the new mines come in and controlled by the SUP process? Now, what that will do, that's, that's one issue. The second issue is the M2 district. And so I guess let's go back to the special use permit first. Is that, how does the commission feel? Is that the avenue you want to handle this issue? That's sort of, if you go back to the discussions and Mr. Wright's presentation, that's pretty much where he left it at. He didn't make the choice for us, he just laid it out and that's what is the least exposure to the county. So if we could get by that issue and then we'll tackle the M2. So now there's other options. They were presented here and we've discussed them. Mr. Wright did it in a presentation, but I just, I figured let's get this done and then we'll work on the M2 or try to come up with some language. So how does the commission feel as far as the avenue you want to pursue on controlling mining in the future? New mines, new mining applications, I guess I should say.
In A1 and M1?
It would be everything that's not already designated M2. In M2, if it's already designated, the area that is gonna be, and basically you're looking at either a mine, someone buys land that's already designated M2, which is limited, or either an expansion by the existing company that's there like the quarries or kynite. The rest of the county, and even in the M2, you know, this is a lot like our growth areas on 15 and Village Center. Not all of this is M2. It's just, this is where we were gonna direct it because that's where the mines were already at. This was, again, set up, I don't know, 10, 15 years ago. We have the ability to enlarge, reduce, keep it the same, but we need to make a decision to, for the board, because we've been charged with that, on the process of all new mines that are not by buy right, all new mining applications that are not by buy right. And again, just to reiterate Mr. Wright's presentation and his legal opinion, sort of led us to the conclusion that the SUP process was probably the least chance of exposure to the county because of the framework you're already given that by the state, that authority. So that's what I'm asking for discussion now, is how do you want to, do you want to go that route or do you want to take one of the other options that was presented to us? Yes?
Personally, I think the SUP would be the way to go to keep things in line, where we could have a limit on what's going on, just like we have, well, what we would have. But I think we need to eliminate gold mining on a large scale. I mean, I don't know how, you know, if we're gonna do it, we'd have a, have an SUP out, but if we had it on, if we didn't have it on a large scale, that's what the people of the county are worried about. You know, what's gonna happen? I mean, you're talking about several hundred acres to come in here and strip the land and if we could work on that, I mean, gold mining is okay if it's done properly, like the guy in Gordonsville, he did his, he was only, you know, going in old existing mines and taking other things, which we could get by that with a SUP, but when you're gonna come in and strip the land and do several hundred acres, I, I think we need to get rid of that.
Well, the SUP process would give you the ability to do that because you would be, you know, you, they would have to have an application to come before you, as long as it was not a buy right in M2, it has to come before this board and, I mean, this commission as well as the Board of Supervisors. So it would get, yes, Pete?
So you're suggesting leave M2 buy right all mining and then just an A1 and M1 on an SUP basis, which is where it's at right now, correct?
Correct.
So what you're doing is any of these mining companies that own A1 or M1 property are gonna come in here and they're gonna ask for a zoning change.
They have that potential, but you also have the potential to deny them.
Oh, that's why I'm just opening it up.
Yeah, true, and that's exactly right.
There was the ability for us to take, I mean, it seems to me that if, if what we want to do is put mining on an SUP, then why not put all mining on a SUP, even an M2?
Well, that's, that is a thought that you could do that. To do that at the point now would require taking the M2 buy rights out.
Right.
And/or just doing away with the M2 zoning district.
Well, I wouldn't do that, but I would suggest if you wanna, if you wanna, if you want new applicants to come in here who happen to be metal miners, I don't care if they're copper or if they're, if they're looking for lithium or whatever they're looking for, okay? You know, it's a, it's a, it's a much more concerning mining operation than, than the aggregate or kynite or slate that's being done now. That's why the complaints are being made. So my point is, if you want new applicants to come before us so that we can at least investigate the applicant, their process, get experts in here, hydrologists in here, I mean, people that we should talk to in order to level whatever condition... in order to level whatever conditions we think ought to be there in order to protect the community, then maybe all of it belongs in an SUP. I mean, we've got people that are already grandfathered in, they're, they're protected. That's a fine thing, but, but if there's going to be new mining operations, why not do, why not do everything on an SUP?
Well, that, that's certainly an option if you choose, I mean.
I'm just asking the commission, I don't, you know, that's just a thought.
Yeah, it, it is a thought. I was trying to separate the two to leave M two for now till we could see. We wanted to go the route of the SUP.
I think the SUP is a good, I think it's a good idea. In fact, even some of the industry people said it was a good idea because then we'd have an opportunity to review the conditions. But I don't see why it's any different from any other, in any other district than it is, or in M two than it is in any other district. I, I just don't see it. I, I think if you're going to mine, somebody who happens to be an applicant ought to come in here and tell us what they're going to do. And we ought to have the right to go out and ask experts if what they're doing is, you know, is, is going to, is going to harm the neighboring properties.
Right. Well, let's, let's decide first on the route. Is, is everybody in agreement or any other options you want to consider? Right now, we're looking at doing a special use permit because that's a framework we're working within. What that would mean is, right now, all I'm saying is that the avenue you want to take. So we can at least establish that. Then we'll address the, the M two district. Because in the M two district, if you're in, in a, if you're mine expansion or whatever, you, you have the ability by buy right, so.
I think sticking with a special use permit in, in A one and M one is the way to go that allows us to explore the stewardship of the companies. Some maybe have better reputations than others, some who have done right by other communities that they've been in. It gives us the ability to look at maybe some of, you know, these two, three and four on a, on Pete's list. Maybe there's some way to word those as, as conditions in our special use permits. And I think that gives landowners perspective without us having to define what is large scale. And I think that's where we've gotten into trouble with a lot of these is us as a planning commission trying to make definitions without knowing what that's going to do as, as Ian was saying tangentially to, if Kynite's looking for Kynite and they happen to pull out a chunk of whatever lithium that they may have run across, you know, on a rare occasion, then they would have broken some sort of metallic mining ban if we put that in there. But they didn't mean to because they were just doing their daily operation. So I think special use permit is probably the way to go, especially in those first two districts as we approach that for right now.
Do you have any comments, even you have any comment?
And yes, I do, but it's probably backing things up a bit. The definition of what we were supposed to do, weren't we supposed also to find what a metal was?
Actually, what we were charged was specifically was to write an order to ban met- metallic mining.
But wasn't there a part two about?
It's sort of, we had mission creep.
We had what?
We had mission creep. It sort of expanded as we started getting, investigating and making the, getting the meetings and getting the experts. The definition, trying to establish a definition for metallic mining and regular mining was fine, other than it, again, it butts up against state law and the authority they've given us because they don't make any differentiation in, in mining. And that is part of our problem. We're, we're somewhat limited on what we can do, so.
Right, and that's what I was thinking, we're limited on what we can do. And I thought we had, part of that was we were to define what that metal was, metal mining?
I mean, we could do that, but it's not going to serve any purpose until the state changes theirs. Because all we're doing is, we can't, again, if we make a definition and then try to put that into conditions, we're going to be exceeding our authority, at least my understanding, exceeding our authority given to us by the state.
Okay, so when we're talking non-metal, that's what, I'm just like being clear on what we're talking about, non-metal and metal minerals. What things we're talking about? Mining, not mining, specifically because we're, we're using the word metals and non-metals, like, I think we're kind of throwing them around? Or that's how I feel, we're throwing them around? And I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Well.
And, and especially since we have Kynite here, we're talking slate, we're talking gold. And, and I think we are hinting at, because what I'm hearing is we want to ban gold mining, but oops, I'm bumping into you, Kynite, kind of thing.
Well, in the, in the eyes of the state, yes.
Yeah.
We have to be careful because of that. But what the special use permit process would do was, would be for us, when an application comes forward that's not in M two at this point, would be, they would have to, we, one of the next things I was going to ask is for the commission, once we get past this, is that we draw up a application form that any new applicant would have to do with, with the help of Nicky and Mr. Wright. And it would have, you know, it would have a list of questions that we could come up with, size, go, what's your mine and all that? I think it might even be possible to mirror what the companies have to do already because I do understand that they have to fill out a state form anyway, application for their mining permit. We may be able to plagiarize some of that, copy it and use it in. But, you know, make it, I think in our case, we probably want to make it more general, not as specific, but I haven't seen what they've got. But right now, this, there would be no need to do a differentiation between metal and non-metal because it's not done by the state. And if we do the special use permit, that covers it. It's like a broad, broad swipe, covers all of it.
Okay. All right, so I'm just clarifying, so part of what they told us to do, we can't do anyway?
Correct. Well, we could do it, but we're probably.
That's the short.
Creating some exposure for the county, yes.
Okay.
I agree with everything Ashley said pertaining to the A one and M one. I just don't know how I feel a hundred percent about the M two. Kind of going off what Pete said, I don't know if that's a possibility, doing a SUP in the M two? So, or if we should say it is and. Area on the comprehensive plan, I don't know.
Okay. Well, it looks like the consensus is we'll go with the special use permit and that reading.
I got one more question.
Yes.
If we go SUP, how will this affect our mining operations that's already intact?
It shouldn't affect them whatsoever.
We're going to be putting them through.
No, because it, it basically is, if we say all right for now, M one, A one and N one, it will just be any new application that comes forth in that district, zoning district would have to have the special use permit, so it'll come in front of us. So in the case, say, for example, Kynite wanted to expand and their operation, and it was in the M two, but it was still M one, excuse me, A one, they would still have to come before us to get a zoning text change for amendment. So we would still be entertaining, so it's not going to affect them on that. Now, I will say this, and we'll get into this discussion. When you change the M two, that may affect them, yes. I don't know how severe, we have to sort of discuss that and make sure we, you know, consider all products that are all angles and unintended consequences, so.
Okay.
But, so if we're fine, we're going to recommend to the board, which is really, then I don't think it, uh, Nicky, we won't really, we're not making any changes. We're just saying we're going to stick with the special use process.
For A one, VC one, M one, sticking with that?
Right now, everything but M two. We're, we're going into that discussion now.
So part of your recommendation back to the board would state that the planning commission feels that the zoning ordinance has the correct tools in place for these specific districts and then anything outside of that? But it would all be backed on your recommendation back?
So do we need to take a vote at this point or just, I mean, basically we're in consensus?
I would probably take a vote so that it's official, so that the planning commission has actually taken an action. Now, this is a work session, so typically no action is taken and, and the discussion is, is open and allowed for. So when we meet again, whenever that may be, whenever the planning commission feels that a time is ready to take an action. But since you were tasked, I would think that you would need to take a formal action so that your recommendation back to the board of supervisors, if you wanted to break this into two parts, however, that ends up turning up after your discussion. But it would need to be a formal recommendation back to the board of supervisors.
Okay, so if I understood you correctly, you want us to do the discussion on M two district before we take a vote? Or do you want us to take the vote on now that we, we recommend the SUP process or?
Whenever, at, at a formal meeting, I would take a, take a vote on. It sounds like it's going to be divided possibly into two parts now.
Possibly, I don't know, we'll just have to see what the discussion is.
Maybe the recommendation will be made so that SUP will be, you know, left in place and enforced since districts, blah, 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 proposed changes to the amendment, what only impact? And then whatever that turns out to be after you discuss the next zoning district.
All right, all right. All right, well, we're, we're in consensus on at least SUP for everything but M two. So now we'll, we'll start with the M two. And in my discussions with Mr. Wright, I had made some suggestions, but they, they really, they really didn't completely address the issue, so. But it looks to me what you need, if you want to take, you, you've got a couple of options. You can either, since we're in the middle of the comprehensive plan, you can reduce the size of what is on the, in the comprehensive plan, size of the area. We can reduce that some. I don't know, that's, that's really not going to solve the issue. Because the issue is, once a mining company has their area as M two, then they have a mine by buy right. They can mine anything. They have the legal authority to do that because it's, it's by right in M two. Now, they, I will say that they also have to, of course, they're not freelance and they have to meet all the regulations of state and federal, but yes. So your thought is either, if you take the buy rights out from mining, you can do, I think that's an option that Mr. Wright and I talked briefly about. And/or you can just, we can discontinue the, just eliminate the M two district. The problem I see is you've got mining companies here already functioning. And you've got the quarries in the north end where I'm at, and then of course you've got Kynite. And we have to be careful because we are going to affect their business approach.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I don't, I don't want to do anything. I don't, and, and I think we need Mr. Wright in here to talk to, to this issue. But in as much as these people are already doing mining, they're doing it in a safe, safe manner.
By assumption, yeah.
Very acceptable. I, I don't foresee any change in what they're doing. The addressing, putting, using an S, an SUP or making it a conditional use really has to do more with people who are about to come in here and do metal mining. You know, I, I personally am not that, that worried about aggregate or Kynite or quarrying. But metal mining is an entirely different animal. And I'm sorry that the state doesn't differentiate it. But if it means we have to put all these mining, mining operations in an SUP, I don't think it should affect those people that are already doing their operations. They, they, they're doing them. I mean, you know, they're sort of grandfathered in and they're doing, they're doing them obviously well. But the new people that come into this district, I think we have an obligation to the people in this county to vet those individuals. It's exactly what you said. We, you know, I'd like to know who's responsible, who's not responsible. I'd like to know their processes, I'd like to know what they're going after. And, you know, I don't want somebody to just come in here and say, well, on a buy right basis, we can tunnel down three hundred foot and get whatever we want to get. And quite frankly, it's, you know, we don't have a whole lot to say about it. I understand there are federal regulations, I understand there are state regulations. But I think the county has an obligation to its people to make sure that we're informed as well as the people are. So I don't know. Maybe the answer is, everything goes into an SUP. I'd like to know from Mr. Wright whether or not that does affect people in Kynite and the quarry and, and the aggregate people. If it does, we've got to find a different answer. But, but honestly, maybe that's the answer. If it doesn't affect these people, then I think somehow we, we have to be able to bring new people in here who have these applications and vet them.
Right, well, you will be, and I understand, you'll be vetting all new applications anyway other than the ones that would be in the M two, which is very limited amount. Or if they buy existing mines, say one of the quarries in Albonia sold, that company has a right to, to continue doing what they're doing. And/or if they were to find a vein of gold, they can mine it. I mean, I, I understand your concern.
Business is business, people buy and sell all the time. I don't know who Kynite's going to sell to, I don't know who the aggregate company, I don't know who Boxley's going to do business with. I don't know if there are going to be mergers and acquisitions. I don't know what they're going to do. I don't, that's their business. My, my business here with the commission is making sure that the county and the people are informed as to what's going on there. That's, that's, that's where the rubber meets the road as far as we're concerned. That's, that's the reason that I suggested early on, you know, leave the aggregate people alone and the Kynite and the slate people alone and, and let's try to separate out the metalliferous mining, mineral mining and, and, and make sure that those individuals come in here and talk to us. But if we can't do that, then maybe everybody ought to come in here and talk to us. That's, that's just my argument. I mean, everybody else may have different view, but that's, that's where I'm coming from.
I understand your concern.
And the other concern I have is if we continue to allow by right all mining in M two, and there are, again, there are, there are companies that own A one and M one, what's to stop those people from, you know, bringing a deluge of requests into us to change their A one and M one to M two? I mean, it, you know, a comprehensive plan is a plan, it's not a, it's not a rule. And when, when we put those zoning districts together, those are the rules. But there's nothing to say that, you know, they can't petition us to change those. And, you know, I'd hate to see Kynite or, or Boxley come in here and say, well, if we're only allowing mining, you know, on a buy right basis in M two, I'm changing all my, my farmland to M two. You know, they've got more lawyers than we do. Just, just a thought.
So those requests still have to come through the planning commission just as an SUP would? We would still have the right to turn down those requests as we do for some of these ones that have been before us to rezone to B one or those sorts of things? I, I hate to cripple or potentially pigeonhole the county as a knee jerk reaction that might have serious economic impacts.
Right.
You know, we are a very resourceful county with lots of things to offer the world. And with what we do, you know, many boards before us have looked at the comp plan, evaluated the zoning and the appropriate places for M two. I would not be in favor of changing the size for the activities right now based on what we do know about those activities.
Any other com- Commissioners?
Well, how much land would we designate for an M two if a gold prospector wanted to come in? Would that be something we need to look at?
Well, what, what the discussion is, what the problem is, I guess for lack of a better way to describe it, is that if you're already M two and buy right and you, you're able to, to mine, there is, because the state doesn't have any, excuse me, any separation in what they mine, it's just class, all classified as mining. They, if they're already M two and they have the buy rights to mine whatever they have. Now, they have to meet the federal and state regulations, of course, but.
So the only real risk is if, as of now, is properties that the mine, the existing mines own that are actually, those are the only ones that are actually zoned M two now.
Right.
The other stuff is just in the comprehensive plan is where you would see future, possibly. But they would still have to come here and get the zoning changed.
The, the parliament, just to sum it real quick for what Pete. The, the, the problem, just to sum it real quick from what Pete has brought up, and it's, it's valid, is if a, uh, for example, if Boxley found a, a small vein of gold in the quarry down there, they have the right to mine it, now, they would have to mine it based on the federal and, to meet the federal and state regulations, but we would not have any control over that because it was by right. Uh, anybody new coming in, you know, or, the other possibility is if one of the mining companies sold their business and that company came and took over and wanted to do a little different type of mining, I don't know, maybe they found something else, I'm not sure, rather than Slate, uh, they could do it also, they, they still have to meet all the state and federal regulations, but the county doesn't have any input on it, we really can't put any conditions on it. Now, I can, I did talk to Mr. Wright and we can require, uh, we have the authority to require that if there's a change in the mining application primary, that we have to be notified, the county that is, but it's because they're by right, we, we can't say they can't do it or we can't put conditions on them, it would be voluntary for that company, anything that we suggested, they, it would have to be voluntary.
I think I would remind Chair Two, we had a conversation with Kynite, and those people go over and above what is regulated by the state and federal government, so quite honestly, not everybody may do that, and what they do is maybe very satisfactory to us, but someone else may come in and decide they just want to use the basic, the, the rudimentary level of, of requirements, that may not be satisfactory to the people in the surrounding community. I, I'm just arguing, I'm making that argument, I mean, Kynite's an exemplary company, maybe Boxley is too, and the Slate company, but not everybody's gonna, I'm not gonna, I've been in business for a long time, not everybody's that way.
Do we have any, how do the commissioners have anything? What was it this time, on this? What we may could do, just as just a suggestion, we, we've established we got everything except for M2, we're going to do SUP other than the M2, uh, we're in the process of doing, revisiting and redrawing the, or at least, uh, bringing up to date the comprehensive plan. Anything we do with this M2 district, because that is going to affect it, if we take the buy rights out, that has to be put into the comprehensive plan, if we leave, if we do away with that, uh, choose to do away with that, uh, district, that would have to be in a, a comprehensive plan too. Because we don't have any actual app, new applications on the horizon, we can just work on the comprehensive plan, give it several months to do that process, and see if we can come to a consensus on what might be a, a good plan. I know it sounds like we're kicking down the can, but technically, we're not. If we did that, I think I would, uh, suggest to the commission that we go ahead and take Mr. Wright's, uh, option to ask the Board of Supervisors to send a letter to the State Corp and see if we can get some clarification.
Different kinds of money?
Exactly.
I, I think that'd be fine.
Now, whether, I'm not naive, I can tell you, whether that's going to materialize, I don't know, but if we could get a clarification from them, it may open, uh, you know, it may be very simple for us to take, if they were to do something, then we could work with it, because that's authority that they're, yeah, given, or, even if you don't give them any, uh, any more authority, at least they give us an explanation.
I'd like to know too, from Mr. Wright, whether or not if we did change all mining in M2 to SUP, you know, i- is there some collateral damage we're doing to our existing companies? I, I don't know, Mr. Wright may know that, are you there? I don't know if he's there or not, but I think that'd be a good question for him to answer.
He's coming now.
Oh, there you are. So, the question-
I heard the question.
Okay, all right.
Anybody existing in M2 that has, is currently mining, you couldn't affect them.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
So, those people be grandfathered in?
Well, they're existing mines right now, without a doubt, yes, it would just be the new stuff, correct?
Be the new stuff, or if they decided to, yeah, I mean, I would assume that if, if they own M2 property and that's what they consider their mining property, I'm assuming that if they were the, if they're sole owner of that entire district, I would guess that that's all grandfathered in. I'm more concerned about people coming in and, uh, and, and asking for new applications or new applicants coming in.
Yeah, right.
So, I mean, I, you know, maybe your idea is a good idea, but I'm just, I just don't feel comfortable leaving all mining in M2 to be by right.
Right. Mr. Dixon, did you have a comment, sir?
I, I'm, I'm going to open it because you are one that's been spotlighted here, I'm going to ask you to come forward and speak just real quickly, state your name, address.
Kai Dixon, uh, Rosney Farm Lane, Dillon, Virginia. So, my, my belief is, you said we had twenty-two hundred acres around Kynite, that's M2. My belief is that, well, o- obviously, right now, we have a right to mine those twenty-two hundred acres, we're currently only mining a couple hundred, but a lot of those twenty-two hundred acres have Kynite on them, and right now, when we move over five feet, we don't actually have to come ask for a special use permit, but my understand, and, and, and a lot of that twenty-two hundred acres is, we actually have a mining permit on, but we're not actually mining it, and so when we move, if, if I understand the proposal, every time we go a little bit this way or go a little bit this way, we have to come back and get a separate special use permit, which we don't now, so the regulation that, Pete, I think you're recommending, you know, everybody says, oh, we're not out there to try to restrict Kynite or Boxley or whatever, the only people you're restricting by this is the current people who are mining in M2 that they thought they had a right to, but now we have to come back every time we want to expand a little bit and get another SUP. So, I don't, I mean, if that's what you're talking about, that seems a little weird and kind of bass ackwards to me, uh, since it was supposedly not to have anything to do with us, it's now going to be only to do with us. So, that's, if I understand what you're saying, that's-
Right.
Kind of weird.
Thank you.
Mr. Bigford?
Yes.
Just in regard to Mr. Dixon's comments, the comments are correct by definition of the zoning ordinance, the parcels by which Kynite and the other companies that are currently zoned M2, they can continue because that activity's there if it remains M2. If they enter a new parcel where no activity has occurred, they would be required, if changes were made to the ordinance, to come back to the county, um, for an SUP to operate in a different parcel where no activity, no shovel has been in the ground. Um, I would say, I've, I've heard a, um, a lot about differentiation between the mining permits, I think we probably should remember that right now, the state agency that's used for the definitions and the differentiation between mining permits we've heard from, that was DMME, there's only two differenti- differentiations, it's either coal or everything else, um, and the state currently does not regulate everything else and deep dive into one metal versus another metal, of course, they do regulate per, um, their agency requirements, but there are two levels of, of mining with DMME, coal mining and everything else. Um, and of course, that, that could potentially be crippling to Kynite or Boxley or High Test is actually included in, um, the acreage in, uh, the northern portion of the county just off of fifteen as well, so, th- those are some of the impacts, so any activity that is currently happening on parcels within those compounds could potentially, depending upon what the recommendation of the planning commission is, back to the Board of Supervisors, um, could be grandfathered there, but should they want to expand to the parcels, which are included under their state and federal permits, for county ordinance, they would be required to submit an SUP.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think I'd be comfortable just leaving everything the way it is right now, but I don't know how everybody else thinks.
Well, we can, I could say we can leave it as is, we're in the process of rewriting the comprehensive plan anyway, so, and, and that's a process that's going to go into next year, so you could, uh, you could be thinking on it as, as, if it, it becomes a factor. Right now, like I say, it's not a imperative that we make a decision tonight, I know it sounds like we're kicking in a can, but I'd rather take time and make sure we get things right, but, uh, anyway, we, we don't have any new applications on the horizon for us coming in, opening up a new mine or expanding up a new mine, but, uh, how do the other commissioners feel, do they feel like, believe it as is for now, uh, we revisit it as we're doing the comprehensive plan?
Yeah. I think we should leave it like it is, and, I mean, if we get any more information, it would help us, you know, and if we just jump into it, we won't know what we're doing, so, just, you know, go with the comprehensive plan.
All right. At the consensus, we're just, we've set up the SUP for everything other than M2, M2 stay as it is by right for now, and we'll try to get more information, uh, how about, I'm, is everybody on board with my request to give me the M2, see if they send a letter to the stakeover? Okay, great, we'll do that then, all right. Do, if that's another consensus, we're leaving the M2 as is for now, so.
Will we await action from, or respond, response from that before we make any formal action to the board?
Hmm, they're expecting something fairly quick. At least some of the, the supervisors are. I think we could do it as a two-part and leave the, would that justify, Nikki, in your opinion? We do the SUP for everything other than M2, we're leaving that as is, but looking at it as we revisit the comprehensive plan?
I'll make a full report back to the Board of Supervisors with your discussions and, and, um, action taken, um, and I'm going to guess or maybe assume that with your recommendation back, the letter, um, and the request to the state will be a portion of this, now, remember, if the board, they'll take all of your recommendations back into consideration if they feel that you need to look at something more specific, they'll, of course, send another task back to the planning commission for a closer eye.
All right, do you need, can we make it formal now, or do you want to wait till next week's meeting?
Generally, we don't take action at a work session, so I would say, either next week's meeting or July's meeting, when you feel-
Okay, all right, very good. Uh, the only other thing I was going to say is the questionnaire, Nikki and I have talked about it, and for any new applications, we'll try to come up with a series of questions that the applicant would have to fill, that sort of, uh, serves dual purpose, it lets them know we're pretty serious about any kind of new mining operations, and secondly, it gives sort of vets things, uh, gives them information, possibility to, Nikki, so she can already vet them when she, ahead of time, in other words, so, if you can be thinking of some questions that you feel like ought to be on the questionnaire, just, uh, just feel free, I guess, like, just, uh, email them or call Nikki with them, anything that you think you want to have on there, uh, they don't have to be so specific, but just general, uh, you know, just, for example, size of the operation, what are you mining, how close are the homes, uh, which main contributor is around, just, you know, the information, and just get as much information as we can. All right, that will then conclude this, if nobody else has anything, we'll move to commissioner matters and concerns, any commissioners have anything they want to talk about, or vet, or say. All right, before we adjourn, I did want to bring up, um, our work session in July, do you have the date on that, Nikki?
Johnson.
July seventeenth, uh, Nikki's going to be on vacation and I'm going to be at a conference, uh, Ashley will chair the meeting and Carl's going to sit in, or if you'd rather table it, we can do that, I'm going to give, I'm going to see what the consensus of the commissioners are.
Chairman, I'm happy to lead the meeting from a legislative standpoint, but for the other commissioners, I, you are the only commissioner that has been through a comp plan review and update, so if the other commissioners feel it better to have Johnny at the helm, I'm, I'm okay with everyone.
Mr. Chairman, we've got such a long time before the end of this thing, I can't see, I, I think I know what they're going to talk about, basically what we did last meeting.
That's my thing.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind delaying anything, just waiting till, it doesn't make any sense.
Is that, go ahead and delay one, one minute? Okay.
I will, actually, if it's okay with the planning commission, I will, uh, let CRC know and ask them, I'll give them a spot on the agenda on July twentieth, um, for a discussion regarding, um, if you have forward.
Okay.
That be sufficient?
Yes.
I'll keep us on task too.
Right, okay, very good. Any, uh, any other things, if not, we'll, I have a motion to adjourn. I'm moved.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor to adjourn, raise your right hand. We are adjourn-